All right, council member, you want to open us up in prayer?
I can.
Father God, we thank you for the day. We ask you, Lord, to be with the ones in Texas that have been devastated by the flood. We ask you to be with them, be with us as we do your work, have us make sound decisions for our taxpayers, in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilor. All right, so we have a couple of things on our work session tonight, hence that's the reason we started early. So the first thing we have is Stephen Burby and Kristen Haley to present and offer to purchase 2.3 acres of city-owned property located at Lake Louise. You guys just come to the podium. You doing all right tonight?
I am, thank you.
I don't think that works. I think we're just pretending with that one. We're going to get us some...
Mr. Mayor, council members, madam clerk, my name is Steve Marie. I live at 18 Lake Louise. We've been there two years now. We moved down here from Chicago. Surrounding our property, we have 2.5 acres right now. Surrounding our property is city-owned property. It's a 53-acre parcel. We'd like to purchase some adjacent property through the simple fact of cleaning it up, making it part of our property, and the benefits to the city would be increased tax revenue that they'll receive because that value will go up as well as our property value. Currently, the property is valued at $81,000, just north of $81,000 based on the Talladega County records. It equates to about $1,530 an acre. We are offering a little bit north of that, about 5% higher. Our attachment that you should have there, number one, shows a two little parcels, shows the two parcels that we're interested in. One triangular section to the south of our property, which is basically 290 feet, a street front along Lake Louise Road, up to into the power lines and back to the form of our existing property. That could equate to 39,000 acres, 39,000 square feet. In addition, we're looking at purchasing an extension to the east of our property, which is 290 feet long. We bring it up approximately to the creek and run through the city property back there, then over and back down along the power line back to the form. The total comes out to about 101,000 square feet, approximately 2.33 acres. In addition to our offer, which is a guaranteed minimum of $4,000, we're also offering to pay for all closing fees, the surveys, and everything else.
I got a question. I'm not a map expert. So if this were to happen, would that be all the city property that's over there? So you're trying, or how much is left? How much is...
No, it's 2.33 acres of the 53-acre parcel.
It's just a small corner where that's over there with the old, old lift up there.
It's on the other side of the road from that. It's not on the same side of the road.
Ah.
So if we wanted to do anything commercial in there, could we, would we still have room?
Not, I mean, this is right in the Lake Louise neighborhood.
The Lake Louise parcel is a 55-acre parcel, and it is a separate parcel from this parcel. And obviously being along the power line.
And this is, sorry, I didn't interrupt you, but this is not the property that we lease out to Bob Green. This is on the other side of the road.
The problem is that assessed value by the county, by the Talladega County Revenue Commission, is not the value of the property. It's just a number that they make up with a formula that's not reflective of commercial value of the property.
Those assessed values always come in low just from, due to mass appraisal, computer, just computed through mass appraisal evaluations.
Yeah, to be fair, we need to get an appraisal, a commercial appraisal or something.
I think it's not that we were against it at all. I just think a legitimate land appraisal, we get that by a third party and then go from there, offer that value, I think that would do us a good job plus having a...
Then they go from there.
And we're required to have that actual value of it, yeah.
Well, I had contacted Phil Barr over in area real estate. He was actually the agent for the courtesies, the people we purchased the house from. That was well over a month ago. I have not gotten anything back from him. He obviously said, you know, "I'm not a big developer. I'm not, you know, I can't spend $10,000 in advanced fee." But he said, gave me a fee that I accepted. You know, "It's okay with you, if you're okay with Phil's appraisal value, we will, you know, I will contact him again in the morning."
I don't, I don't know if he, that's something you should be responsible for since, I mean, it's going to be in both of our best interests to get that appraisal done on that property.
This city property, we can just contact him.
Yeah, so we'll, I think, I think we need to probably take care of that.
Okay.
Not, because I think that, you know, even if, I'm not saying we are, you don't, you don't want to take a loss on something that's not technically...
Your own.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah, I don't want you to have to do that. So I think we need to reach out to somebody so we can just get an appraise and then we can...
And have an attorney look at it.
Right, yeah.
So we got to protect ourselves legally too, follow the laws.
Wayne, did you get a copy of this?
I have not seen it.
You can, all right, you can have. Actually, you can give mine.
I'll get, I'll get with Bill and area and we'll get that ball rolling, getting the appraisal.
Well, actually, look, I don't think us personally need to do it either. Who would have this?
Shannon.
Okay, yeah, not us.
Or Wayne.
And so hopefully, and hopefully you can answer by the next council meeting, so we can have you answer, not, I guess, so we can at least have the appraisal back. I don't know how long that's going to take to get an appraisal. So we'll have some sort, some sort of communication back to you over the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Do we have your contact info?
It's on that, it's his cell phone number on the paper too. Thank you so much.
So we'll do that and then get back in touch with you once we have the documentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ashton, are all the kids here yet?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I think so.
All right, because this is going to take, what time did you say you told me to be here?
Five.
Five, all right. All right, so next on the agenda is Mark Ledbetter to discuss the Silicon Valley Emergency Response Plan. And I did have Shannon to print us off the information, but Mr. Ledbetter, he also came to prepare. Do you need a chair, Mr. Ledbetter? You can just sit up here?
I'm all right. Thank you though.
All right, because I figured this is going to take, you know, a few minutes for us to discuss. I don't want to have to make you stand. We can also get a table and a chair for you to sit down with your documents.
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, sounds good. Okay.
Sure if I fall down, I'll have plenty of help.
All right, just don't stop talking. Just proper set up with your airbrush, ever a little bit.
I want to start by saying I appreciate being able to address this issue again, and I also appreciate Paul here because if I had not read it on, on the Facebook, I would have forgotten. This week, today, I, that's just part of being 72, I guess. I presented to you a survey of what's in place now, what's been in the past. I did make some recommendations. That's just me. I'm a citizen, I'm not a politician, even though my major at school is public administration. I forgot more than you. So that's not my forte. You have in place an emergency response plan under guise of the National Incident Management System and under, that umbrella, the Incident Command System. In the event that something would take place requiring their performance, then you have that in place. That's, that's not an issue. I would, I'm going through this, my recommendation would be that to consult with the fire chief, police chief, and other parties to evaluate where we are because the plan, if you look at it, I'm not going into details, if you look at it, is comprehensive. It's not just we're sitting ready, pull a book off the shelf and see what we got to do. It has to be an ongoing proactive entity. It includes functions of preparation, mitigation, response, and recovery. So that takes some planning, it takes some organization, and again, I would refer to the responsible parties for that plan.
Okay, so, and we went over all that last time. So here's my questions, because from what I understood, you just tell me if I misunderstood. From my understanding, you said it's kind of like a board or an authority. So from our stance, how do we, how do you suggest we go about getting this board set up? Because even with all this information, we can't do anything until we set up a board.
You don't, you don't have, I didn't mean to imply that we have a board in place. That's not true.
Okay, so I misunderstood you.
Yes, ma'am. What I did say is, under Chapter Nine, which repealed orders done in 1960s, you have a civil defense unit which is responsible for responding to emergencies. You have that, and I documented that and presented that to you. You have that in place, but it issues, and then the Silicon Valley Emergency Management Agency that Mayor Payton put in place, they faded for different reasons, and I don't know if Chapter Nine was ever engaged.
Okay, so we don't have, so we, all we have is what you gave us. So this is what I'm asking, because we, we got to start somewhere. I'm trying to figure out how to start. So with those people that were put in place up under Mayor Payton, like, how were those people appointed? Like, how were those people chosen? So he just appointed, how many people were there? So how many people were there?
I believe there were five or six.
All right, five people, hold on. Are these, would this be considered, I mean, this is the how-to plan, but are there some sort of bylaws that are already in place? All right, hold on.
I don't, in my research, I didn't come across that kind of information.
All right, hold on.
I just know, I talked to one of the former members of that agency that no longer resident at Silicon Valley, and he says it was operational and funded, they had equipment purchased, so forth, and my understanding, and I may be misspeaking, so if I am, I will apologize, but a lot of the equipment that was purchased was bequeathed to the Cusa Valley Rescue Squad.
Okay, all right, so we will have to have the, hold on, I'm just making my notes so I can...
So I was under the understanding that it was more of a logistical type board or authority more than a rescue squad. Am I correct?
It was, it was. You had, you had, you had an administrator who was over there, you had the other board members who were assisting, and they had purchased equipment, and it was operational. You had to change the administration, following, the administration did not put the emphasis on it like Mayor Payton did, and for whatever reason, it faded, just like the civil defense thing, the Chapter Nine. It just, it's there, but it just was never followed through, didn't catch the vision, whatever. And what I would, get it, try to streamline here, I gave you the information, you have these things in place, I don't know what you do with them, I'm not, I don't know what legally an ordinance means to this city or this council or this mayor. I know it's a city ordinance, it's in the municipal code, Chapter Nine. You can find it on Google. Google finds everything. I can help with my help.
I understand all of that, but again, we're all under the impression, under the impression that it's like a board or an authority, and we, we want to help. I mean, clearly, this seems like something that worked in the past, and what is that, what is that about?
The only time I know, I know that Incident Command System was in place was BB Corvair Fire in 1994.
I think it's...
This incident system is something we, we teach and we learn in rookie school on day one, so we use it on every scene we go to.
Fire department, I've been trained to two levels on ICS.
I know, but we also don't, we're not trying to replace y'all. Y'all know what y'all do, you know, we don't, we're, this is my thing, we're not trying to put a team in place to replace what you do. You know what I'm saying? We want a team in place to help with what we talked about, you said, the donations and the volunteers so that the citizens can get the help that they need.
I believe you got to do something with those two things so you won't have them on the books. Maybe that's a housekeeping thing, I don't know, but you have the NMS, you have the ICS in place, critical incident takes place, you've got that. So I'm just saying maybe you need to deal something with these others, call their own books.
Let me ask this though, is, so basically, are you proposing for after the incident that y'all come in and y'all help assist the people who are affected by?
That goes to the last part of Silicon Valley Volunteer Organizations Active in Disaster pattern after the national, state, and Talladega County. Talladega County EMA has been very helpful, reaching out where the other agencies you have to have declared emergency or disaster disaster. But the last point being, this volunteer can take care of the missing component in a response. For instance, it can provide training for individuals to respond for a variety of issues like donation management, distribution, eliminates duplications, and eliminates unneeded donations. It can provide what's called hospitality centers, that if there's a major fire like it was at Avondale, you can have hospitality where you have volunteers come in and there present water relief, a place for them to sit in the shade, things of that nature. It is a volunteer organization, but it can't, if, it cannot operate like a housing authority or the airport board. It comes under the umbrella and it only is deployed when the incident command says, "We need VOA to step in." You're going to have volunteers. Volunteers are the first to respond to last week. If you do not have an organized way, a systematic way of registering these volunteers, dispersing these volunteers, and this simply is to help the incident command system, is to be in place, work in conjunction, it's not self-deployed. It can be helpful in like with all, all trace fire. It can be a agency under Silicon Valley City that is geared towards getting faith-based, civic-based, coordinating with entities you already have, the Chamber of Commerce, SAFE, putting all these under umbrella so that we all have a systematic that when we determine by ICS that these individuals are in need, we deploy.
And I think that's, I'm all for that, the organization of the volunteers to provide the donation management and stuff like that for after the fact.
Absolutely.
I just, I don't, I'm 100% on board for that, but I'm, I'm not on board with having an additional like rescue squad type board.
No, this is not what that is.
I don't want that. I want the donations, I'm all in support of the donation side and having a complete support system to, you have a one-stop shop with the board saying, "All volunteers, this is what we're going to do to, this is what the people need, this is how, where we're going to take them, this is how we divide it up and give people what they need."
And that's what we thought, that's what I thought this meeting was going to be. That's, that's what I was thinking.
To go to something you pointed out, part of VOA is having a volunteer registration center in which, for instance, the Southern Magis have a great chainsaw response team, but they need to check in, register, go through the safety procedures of the city, and then ICS will tell us where they need to go. We don't need a bunch of chainsaw groups going helter-skelter because the need will be already evaluated, the location will be already determined, and we'll present to the ICS, "These people are here, they have this skill, they're ready to do," and then they can be deployed according to the command system.
Okay, I get it. That makes sense. And also too, you're saying that these people aren't activated unless the police chief or fire chief activates them, calls them.
Right.
All right, okay.
But before all of that, we still have to get in order of A, bylaws, and B, how do we put board members?
But they're, they're on you, so that's the thing. So we need to create a board and then just, they're, they're going to create the bylaws. But we need to tell them exactly what we want and expect from this board so that they can create the bylaws, and they're also going to have to get some, some input from the police and fire. So I got some notes over here too. Okay, all right, it's making sense now. I think you confused me with that emergency response thing. Sounds like you're creating another...
No, that's not my intent. You already have something in place.
Okay.
VOA simply complements, supplements, and responds according to the need as determined by ICS.
And you're going to help us, once we get these five people in place, you're going to attend the meeting and help them come up with the bylaws and let them know how this usually works because you're trained.
I will avail myself and all the resources I have to accomplish the task.
Okay, and I also asked Megan to come to Megan Poe. I talked to her about it. Megan, you can come up and tell us about some of your training. She said she was trained on some of this in, in college, on some stuff like this as far as emergency response and how to manage donations and how to get people to help, because I know she was telling me, you know, she had some ideas and she's willing to be a part of this board and help us. So Megan, just give us, just tell the people some of the things you can tell, because I know you said there was a way to do things like this, you know, y'all do these gift cards and so on and so forth. So just give us a little bit of information because we are just trying to come up with a way to get this board back active, and I've already volunteered you on the board. So we just got to get four more people.
All right, everyone, my name is Megan Poe. I am a licensed professional clinical counselor. I'm a graduate student at JSU, and I'll be graduating this May, this upcoming May with my EBS in clinical mental health. But we went through, I went through several courses at JSU that provide information on how to provide support to people in need, whether it be economic disasters or fires or just people that may be dealing with some adverse travel experiences. And so one thing that I found that may be beneficial would be these gift cards, and I've done some work here with Silicon Valley High School, the counselors there, Miss Darian here recently with fires, and we really just kind of work together. We get donations, monetary donations, instead of kind of getting the pillows or food or just donations in general. We just kind of focus on the monetary side of it so that the people that are in need, if they need a housing, food, if they need a bill paid or clothing or whatever, they could just purchase what they need instead of trying to find a place for all the donations that was received. And I know the community did a really good job at providing support to those families, but I do think that, like you guys, I think it's a better way that the donations could have been handled. And I'm willing to be on the board from a clinical standpoint. I'm kind of was put on the spot today, but I'm willing to be on the board from a clinical standpoint as a counselor to provide that support because those people and the kids that were affected by the fire, they're going to need our support all after, you know, everything is gathered and they'll, somebody to talk to their mom losing a home, losing a family member, whatever the case may be. And I would hope to see that happen here in the city aboard like what you presented to them or whatever the case may be. But just in general, our city needs more mental health support, we're thankful for all the point, but we need more people willing to come out and help the people even with gun violence. There's a lot of that, even in Talladega County, people that are allowed to talk to the people of their homes in general. So I'm willing and I'm free to offer my resources to the city.
Okay.
That's good, that's good, Stu.
Thank you, Megan. I do appreciate that. So this is what I'm going to ask the council and the mayor, because I think everybody should have some input. If everybody could, I guess, what's today, Tuesday, so by next Tuesday, get one person that you would like to have on this board with their contact information, because I think we'll do 61. Mary, you hit somebody, do somebody you think would do, you know what I'm saying, do, be a really good addition to this board? And that way, we can go ahead and get the board created and get everybody this information and they can start setting up how they want to have their first meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Ledbetter.
I'm going to add, I wish I had met this young lady earlier.
Well...
Monday, a week ago, I met with five, four or five families in what's called a debriefing, which addresses what she was talking about, and that's part of VOA, is also followed up with critical incident. In fact, that's what I'm training as a chaplain, perquance a chaplain, to help with the individuals, groups, or community. That is essential to mitigate any mental or emotional problems they may encounter, hopefully mitigate those. So that's part of it. So I'm just saying I wish that she had been available and been for the use of pre-sessions the night we met.
Well, hopefully, we can just do better with the board. So if you would, would you exchange contact information with Megan? Because once we get the other five people's information, we're going to let you guys get together so you can have your first meeting, so we can go ahead and get the bylaws and the rules and meeting times and things like that put into place so that hopefully, hopefully we don't have another incident like that, but if we do, we'll be prepared.
Well, I know the statistics are one in a thousand. From 4th of July until last weekend, we had four, one in a thousand incidents created by storms. Silicon Valley is prone to flooding, and you find that in London.
So, and I know you're going to guide them in the right direction and give them all the information that you have so that this board can be successful.
Yes, I do what I can.
Okay, so Megan, you and Mr. Ledbetter are going to exchange contact information?
Or...
And I got to get your, your email address, so once everybody else gets their person, we'll get all you guys connected so you can have your first meeting with Mr. Ledbetter so we can go ahead and get this board act, in place and active. Y'all good with that?
I agree as well. Tom Hosman's on there too.
Okay, well, I mean, if that's your person, that's fine. So, all right, so everybody have their person by next Tuesday. Phone number, I mean, does?
Yeah.
You good? Because you already got your person in your head, though.
I got about five. We'll see who has interest in it.
I'm surprised you don't want to be your person, or...
No, no, thank you.
All right, okay. All right, so next, we got one minute. All the kids, your action? Okay, we'll just go, we'll wait a few more minutes then. We'll go to number four, how about that? All right, so next on the agenda is Stephanie to request a budget amendment of $2,500 from SPAN Neuter GL010-540-42528-000 to Office and Operating Supplies GL010-540-42001-000. All right, Stephanie, how you doing tonight?
I'm fine. How's everybody?
Good, good.
So just here this evening to request the $2,500 to be transferred from SPAN Neuter line item to my operating budget. Because of the increased number of stray animals, our expenditure for vaccines for the animals that we do care for is through the group, and so that's what this money is.
This isn't any new money, this is just us moving it from your money into where you can spend it.
That's correct.
You going to ask something about this or something else?
I'm going to ask about this. I just need someone to help me understand.
Okay.
Okay? You know, we talk about how important spay and neuter is, spay and neuter is, spay and neuter is. We want to, everybody wants to be spay and neuter, but we're asking to move funds out of that account to pay for office supplies. Help me understand why it's coming from there and we, we need money in that account to do spay and neuter, and I'm sure these funds are not restricted on it.
No, these are not.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have the other account with restricted funds.
Right.
Specifically for spay and neuter.
Yes, ma'am.
The problem is, is that we've got too many strays, as you know, we've had this conversation. And in order to be able to move the animals and begin to sort of, you know, help them toward rehoming health-wise, we have to give them a series of vaccinations. Puppies from the onset require three. We have a litter of eight, that's an entire case, an entire tray. We have a litter of eight. That's an entire case, an entire tray of vaccines. My vaccines fall under operating supplies, it's or office supplies.
Okay, okay. So, so we're taking money from spay and neuter to buy vaccines and other things that, what other supplies are we buying? Vaccines and what? Paper pens, all that good jazz?
Not, this is specifically for vaccines. And there would be some antibiotics and things like that.
And it comes out of your supply. I got you. I'm, I'm on board now. I just need to know what we needed to. Because I knew, I know how important spay and neuter is and we're always hard on it. We need funds for it. I didn't understand why we've taken it out of that account to pay for this. So I'm good. Thank you, Ms. Stephanie.
And you recently began imposing a fee on animals that were reclaimed or something?
No, so there's, we have our, I guess, standard reclaim fee, which is fifty dollars. So if an animal comes in, either through a, a member of the community has an animal ducked in their yard and they bring it to the shelter and it turns out to be owned by somebody. So that animal is later picked up by its owner, then there's a reclaim fee, okay? Um if an animal comes to us via ACL, like myself and another coworker were at nine oh four, I swallowed them recently, to get a highly vicious dog.
Yes.
And her pup, it took us an hour, okay? But that dog was after every person in the neighborhood and it went after car tires. I mean, it took us an hour.
Very interesting.
Um so that owner finally showed up. He had to pay, you know, it's fifty dollars per dog. But we've been kind of lax about charging the daily forty, which is ten dollars, which is, you know, also mandatory.
So we're just enforcing some rules with our agreement in place. Okay.
Good.
Alright, y'all are just notifying the public or sexual media.
Yeah, we're done.
I got a question. And I used to remember stuff, but I don't. Did we get those um rabies vaccinations? Like, did we get those taken care of?
Oh, yeah. No, we've got follow-up on that. Yeah, we're pretty, we've got spreadsheets coming on a lot of stuff. And we sent the ACL out to check and us, you know.
No, for you guys, for the employees.
Oh, no, we need to follow up.
Yeah, that's what, I, I didn't think we did. So, so what's the, um, what's the update on that?
I gave you a sheet. I thought I was gonna be appearing last time. Um I did give you a sheet. I think it was nine hundred dollars per employee. It's, it's a two-shot.
Yeah, we just, we just didn't revisit it.
We didn't pass it officially.
But there was a reason why we didn't though. Shannon, I remember saying something, something.
I wanted a hard copy. We had been given a verbal estimate from um Kuzma Valley and I wanted.
Okay. So when are we getting? Because when you first presented it, it says, you told us how like important it was and how like we were on a timeline. And then we just dropped the ball.
I was very concerned about it because of the amount of animals and the ones we do have that have stray.
But we're waiting for you though. So we're ready. So when are you gonna get us that hard copy so we can?
I gave it to you.
Yeah, she had two slots meeting.
Stephanie, on the state inspection.
We did. Okay. That's what I was asking. I thought so.
It was a three-shot series, not two.
Yeah.
The um hospital had sent that paper. So you did, it was thirteen fifty per.
That's what I thought. So did you guys go and get those?
Yeah, I have permission.
That's, that's, yeah, that's why I'm confused. So I'm, okay, I'm not crazy, okay? So we did approve it, but you still, y'all, you guys hadn't went and skinned it up to get them. So what, what does she need so they can go ahead and get them?
Just to her story.
So, but it's on her though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're a requisition.
And then you guys can go ahead and get those vaccines, Stephanie.
Okay.
Alright.
Maybe I can. Alright.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Alright, so next on the agenda, um Laura, this you. It says to discuss a fireworks ordinance. And I see, I didn't, I didn't get this. I got this ordinance when everybody else got it. I was under the impression that you wanted to go over an old ordinance, but this is a new ordinance because it has Shannon's name on it. So.
Yes.
I guess you have the floor.
Okay. So while I personally believe in limited government and, but my job is to represent the people, not just with my own views, but with their views. I had several veterans contact me who suffered from PTSD. And also I had a pretty good bit of other people, just community members, contact me about fireworks. People were shooting them at three AM. I mean, there was no stopping with them. And this is just proposed, not to completely outlaw fireworks, but have a designated time for when they start and stop.
So let me ask you. So who wrote this? Who came up with this? Alright, so are you asking that we look over this and consider it? Or are you asking that this is what you want to have put in place since?
I would like for it to be put in place because I mean, every district, I, I heard from a lot of different people. And I mean, not just the veterans, not just, you know, older people. But I mean, I had people who had animals who were, you know, one got lost. I had one ended up at my house and I had to find its owner. It ran off during fireworks. And it just gives people an actual time period when to expect them and when not to.
Okay, so, alright. So this is what I think we need to do. Um I think first of all, Wynn needs to get it. And then since we all have it, we need to just go through it and put our questions or comments on it before we can um consider it.
May I say something?
Go ahead.
I totally agree. Wynn, I mean, fireworks is something serious in our town. We all know that. But I think Wynn is it. But who's going to enforce this?
Oh, and also to the fire chief and the police chief.
Who's gonna enforce it, sir?
If the ordinance is signed, then all of it, my responsibility to see that they are all.
So that, so if somebody's shooting fireworks after three o'clock, well, what we gonna, who's gonna, the police is gonna have to go.
Right.
Rondell, have you seen this ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Two people's gotta see the ordinance. Rondell's gotta see it. Wynn's gotta see it. Then we can write our, I think those two need to see it.
Wynn's got it.
I have it, but I haven't, I just got it.
Haven't it?
I, I understand.
And I sent it out when I requested it on the agenda. I sent it out several weeks ago when I made the request.
I'm saying I didn't get it until Shannon sent me the agenda request. That's what I'm saying. I found out about it like right before we got the agenda.
As long as Ron and Wynn sign up on it, I don't see why we couldn't sign up.
We, we really need input from Wynn because this makes it unlawful for anybody to shoot fireworks.
No, not, no.
Talking about eighteen-year-old age limits and stuff like that to.
Alright.
Libs and all these and all that.
Alright, so Laura, thank you for this. So.
Because we had people shooting them in the road. That was another complaint I kept getting was people were shooting them in the middle of the road. I went to the fire chief. I presented to him before I ever, because it has been in here, you know, that they're to be contacted if you wanna go outside of the special times.
No, but what I'm saying is we as a council had had a chance. This is the first time.
And the one enforcement hasn't seen it.
Yeah. Alright, so fire chief, you got copy of it?
I read over at least one version of it. I want to.
Alright, so let's get a copy of the fire chief, police chief, Wynn, and then we'll um circle back with our coming discussion the next minute. So we got, I got my physical copy. So just make your notes on it. And everybody make their notes on it. And then this will be on the next um agenda for discussion. Shannon, you got it?
The only one that needs it. Everybody else has it. Rondell's the only one that needs it.
He just said he had, just so, he, he just said he did.
He got the copy. That, that's official. I think she's finalized.
She said she had.
He does have it.
Does Mike either look at this?
Mike said he don't need to see nothing.
I don't see it. Let me.
I don't blame you, Mike. I wouldn't need it.
There was a big issue, especially on my road, Walnut Street, where people were shooting them in the middle of the road. And it, I got a lot of complaints.
I'll look at you. I want to check.
Alright.
Your chest.
We're still waiting, actually.
I'm waiting on anybody? Y'all good?
Is it, we're waiting a few more minutes or are y'all ready? Yes?
Okay. Alright, I'm on a, yeah, I'm on to introduce the Silicon Valley National Six-Unit Team uh for the uh All-Star Team from Park Reg this year. Uh they won the regionals and competed in state. Uh did very well. I'm gonna invite coach, head coach Cody Duffy to come up here. Um you can call your assistant coaches up and then call your kids up individually. They can stand up here and then we'll take a picture and you can talk a little bit about it.
My assistant coach got here. Scott Gray.
And my, my son's not here, so.
Come on, man.
Mr. Red Brown?
That's right. He's just waiting.
We didn't even say his name.
Red Brown?
Oh.
I'm sorry, we were talking.
No, he's been great. Ryan Ross?
You rather bowl too? Is it?
Oh. A little bigger seat? Can't say nothing? Mr. Ray Leonard? Birthday of one, Mr. Kelly Curtis?
Happy birthday. I think I got some rings to stop windows, right?
Stand behind these guys. Other kids from TikTok.
Y'all make sure you got those rings out.
Oh, hey, they already hit us.
I'm gonna go first. You might have your. You go ahead. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Stay still.
Right here, guys. That is.
Ah, my turn?
You had all this time. Film with the camera?
Alright, one, two, three. Gotcha.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Kelly. Happy birthday to you.
Worth the cake. Thank you, guys. Good job, guys.
Good job. We got a lot of great talent coming out of Silicon Valley. Well, don't let them leave. Then we'll call our next caller, Chris and I.
Wynn? I was gonna say. Five, nine years. That's what my mic on. It might not be able to hear me or something.
Megan, I got some information for you too. I'm gonna um, so you can have the stuff that Mr. Ledbetter gave you about the emergency response. Yeah. So this is um, this is gonna be kind of like what's gonna be expected. And I also, I made some notes on the back. You can. And then we'll talk more about it as well too. But once we get all the um, those other five people, maybe we'll put you in contact with them so we can get that started.
Okay.
Alright. Everybody in that wants to be in?
Okay.
Alright, next agenda item is police chief Rondell. We used to discuss his request for a pay increase for Officer Jonathan Mann from PDC step four twenty-two oh six per hour to PDC step five twenty-two point six to one per hour to prevent um compression upcoming with hiring of certified officers.
Thank you for listening to me. When Officer Mann was hired in last June, he was hired in um as a step two. And that was before the take-home car program and before I knew of other departments doing one for five. So when I instituted that, uh it has been a success, both the one for five and the take-home car program. Because I have hired since then three. I have two um on deck to be hired. I've got two in the dugout. And I've actually had three in the stand looking. I can use baseball net boards, but.
But you know, we get it.
I know you get it. Um and incidentally, uh like I said, it's worth it. The ones in the stands are lost today because another agency close to us instituted a, a sign-on bonuses. But that's another thing. What I am doing is I'll be before y'all again in two weeks to bring in the other four to request step three also. So this will prevent them from making the same thing as somebody that's already been included in the group. And he is the only one. Now, I'm willing to give him the fifty-two cents from my salary if that's what it pays.
Chief, refresh my memory. We, we did something for a lieutenant and a, was it two lieutenants? What did we do?
I won't call any names, but when one lieutenant was promoted, another lieutenant faced compression. So in order to prevent that from happening, uh for lack of better terms, you fixed it.
Yeah, we did. I remember.
And that's what I'm asking you to do now. He's the only one. There won't be any other. Now, of course, y'all could tell me no when I come before you again in two weeks. And I took a year, but I'm done with that.
But the ones you're coming for us in two weeks, you haven't hired them yet, right?
I've hired two. I hired two today.
So why, why aren't, so what, at what point did you decide you want to hire them at a higher step? At what point did you decide that?
When I look at their years of experience and what they offer to see.
Okay, so why aren't we?
Taking into account HR's education thing.
So, so why aren't we asking before we hire?
Because the rules and regulations that have been set forth by y'all only allow me to go step two. If you were to sit here today and say step three, you'll never see my face again.
But, but I guess. But I guess the reason I'm asking is kind of like, I know, hopefully each time you're asking before the pay period is over. Hopefully that's happening, before the pay period has ended. So we're not having to go retroactive. I just don't understand why, once you look at the applications and the resume, you already see the experience. Why weren't you coming to ask before you hire?
Because we have an extensive hiring process that, that they must complete.
Uh huh.
Only now I've instituted conditional offer of hiring. Because we can't get scheduling for psychologicals and some other things because the people we use are behind. So I've actually instituted another form saying, hey, I'll hire you. Hey, you hired. Come to work. But if you don't meet this list's standard criteria, bye-bye. Doing what I can to get people in here. I was twelve down. I'm now at ten. I get these others, I'll be down eight. And these are all certified officers. Like I said, take-home program and step three.
That's happening.
It's making it work. Now, when this other agency went today with the ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus, oh well. Somebody real close to us.
Let me ask you this. And this, I mean, I, I just still need to ask. Um what are the stipulations on that sign-on bonus? How, how long do they have to stay? Do you know that?
Three years.
So three years and then they have to pay it back?
Right. Or no, three years and it stays.
But if they leave before the three years, they have to pay it back?
They have to pay it back. And I actually thought about coming to you at one time. I talked to my VA zone about it. The unused salaries, um possibly doing the same thing here. But I, I was told the unused salary is supposed to go to retirees or something like that. Shannon told me so. I mean, I'm trying everything I can. It's just not here. It's everywhere. The sheriff's department is thirteen now.
I know, but we still need to find out what's making us different from everybody else. Like what is everybody else offering that we're not offering?
But Chief, Chief, did you?
Well, they just started that.
Did you get an email from me about Auburn's new offer?
No, sir, I didn't say so.
Auburn is now posting positions, hiring police officers. There are no educational requirements at all. They may completely remove. No bonuses or anything, but the, the educational requirements are gone. And it's a starting salary of fifty-six thousand.
Wow.
But, but I thought that was interesting that, that their way of compensating is not throwing cash at it. It's removing the educational requirements, which, which just seemed to be odd. But I, I must have it in my outbox. I'll send it to you. But we obviously need to look at all these effects to figure out what we're gonna do to keep people from poaching our, the good people we're able to get.
I got you. I found, I talked to the mayor and allowing me to go down to twenty and a half. Uh I won't call names, but another agency is full because they hired nineteen.
That's weird.
I don't want a nineteen-year-old walking in your house kind of, and you've been married twenty years trying to talk to you about what you're doing wrong. That's just me. Um so. Mayor said, nah, 20 and a half and that too, their birthdays in six months.
You gotta squeeze it down.
Yeah, I've been working on that, I'm trying, I really am. I, I gotta quit.
We may, we may have to revisit that unused salary deal, you know, we, we not, um, we don't know real good job keeping up with that anyways.
Shannon looked at me like I was crazy.
I can imagine, it's okay.
Well, I have a question, but you should have a significant amount in that.
I do.
And so I, I don't see how that could be an issue with using some of that because, I mean, you're not gonna need all that for retirees at this time. Or in the near couple of years.
You're thinking the same way, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree, but sometimes in this day and age, and the way some things are, you look at some things, I also understand some people don't wanna do this job. I, I told Mr. Perryman the other day, Washington DC, Hope Metropolitan Police Department has a $25,000 sign-on bonus.
Yes, they do.
And they're 15 in the hole.
Yeah, we may have to visit that menial problem.
Like I said, I'll give him the 54 cents out of my salary. If I have.
The only, the only issue, the only issue I have...
I'm still talking, I can't count.
The only issue I have is, we, we've been here before and, uh, with the compression deal. It's not, not so much here, I agree, you know, compression, you don't want somebody that's been here before or somebody coming in making more than somebody that's been here longer. I, I get it. But we visited, visited it before in other departments and they were told no.
And, and I...
Couldn't do that. And I'm not directing this at you by any means, you, you don't have anything to do with this. But we have had compression questions and tried to adjustments, I guess you would say, and were told no. So why all of a sudden are we doing this now?
Hey, can I answer that?
Sure, yes sir.
Because if I do things right, then we shouldn't be facing this independent market, cop or anybody else. Now, of course, you know, like I said, I'm coming to you and asking you to do something. If you decide to say no, there's gonna be compression, I think we was, he brought that up last time, I said that's gonna happen. And to be honest with you, cause I stood up here and looked at her and said there's gonna be compression. So when she said you eating them words, to be honest with you, it's a matter of moral ground.
Yeah.
If I can keep the people here, and this is just this one man, I just told you, I get the 55 cents out of my salary if I have.
I mean, he's been an officer for 16 years, 17 years.
No, no, I agree with the, I agree with what you're saying wholeheartedly, but why, why are the other departments not getting the same?
Well...
When they were talking, like I said, I'm not addressing it.
And I think we need to look at the other departments as well, nothing against, you know, but I think we need to look at the city as a whole. I mean, we've got the fire department who's not gotten their education since we passed it and it was not built into their plan because we didn't have...
Well, according to the information that we received that was built in, that's the information that we were received. And also too, we just implemented that new pay plan and it increased by what, $2 million? And everybody should have been taken care of on that payment.
But we took away their killing time, cop time, we took away their incentives and they did not win very much with that pay plan.
Some of you got $30,000 pay increases and according, yes they did. I see you shaking your head, yes they did. And you were part of implementing that pay plan, you were a big part of implementing that pay plan.
But I hope they were good education when we passed it September 17th. Because, I mean, when every other department got it except the fire department. I mean, it's not fair to that one department not to get it. And I wholeheartedly believe in fixing law enforcement and the fire department. But the question is, is do we treat the, of our, some of our first responders differently? Do we separate them from the rest of the city and not give them what they're to be?
Chief, I don't think we're good with that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I, I think, I think it's the same, but it's, that's, that's just...
I mean, I had, I had to try.
Our fire department, they made what, more than what any other fire department in Talladega County. I think that, that, but, I guess I've been getting around this.
I mean, and I knew, I knew, let me finish, I won't finish talking. But like the policy passed for every other department and we can't build something, and that's the pay plan. We couldn't build a pay plan around a policy that didn't exist. I mean, the argument of that just doesn't hold water. We passed it as a whole for the city and, um, every department received their step increase except the fire department.
Well Laura, this is what I'm gonna recommend, it's not on the agenda to discuss. I say get with, um, the fire chief and the person that implemented the pay plan and then get your argument put on the next agenda. It's not on the agenda for tonight.
It's about the September 17th thing that we passed, it's not about the pay plan as a whole.
It is concerning the pay plan because on the pay plan, the information that I was receiving, apparently I was the only person that received that because everybody else is, um, some people are shaking their heads, they were compensated. Everything was put into the line items, they fill in a pay plan based on their experience, based on their education, so on and so forth. That is the information.
That's how they were placed.
And that's the information that we were given.
They were placed on a pay, pay plan, but some were placed incorrectly, some were lost money.
Yeah, because we took away everything from, we took away their incentives for...
If you got placed higher on a piece of paper, but got your other items taken away, you netted less money.
Yes, you did, it's not fair to them. I mean, we literally, we did them wrong with it. And if we, why did we pass that on September 17th if it holds no water? Like if it's, what was the point of passing education and every department getting it except one?
Well, get your information Laura, have it on the next agenda because we don't have anything in front of us. There's nothing in front of us and we're all just winging it today.
May I ask?
Because the inform... Yeah, you can, but the information that I was giving and when you were giving the same information, right? They were compensated based on their education, their incentives and all it, that's what they were placed on, placed on the pay plan.
But why just one department then? I don't understand that, why wouldn't the rest of the city?
Everybody was different on the pay planning and you should have remembered that.
I mean, that's different.
And the department has, were the ones that said, we're gonna place them on the pay plan based on these. Everybody came up with their own stuff, because even the street department, they had to do theirs as well. Everybody had to do it. That was the whole point of the pay plan, that increased our budget by $2 million. That was the whole point.
You're gonna also ask Chief Muse about this other thing you brought up?
Ah, yeah, well, Nate told, I mean, Ashton told him he was done, but he wasn't done.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Chief, well, go ahead Nate. Can I, can I, can I say something while we on this subject before we get back to, uh, Chief Muse?
Go ahead.
If my memory serves me correctly, and I think it does, HR was wanting to complete status forms explaining everyone's raises and where they went on the pay plan. Now that's what we discussed in January of 2024. The council was told this and I always thought Nate was, was allowed to do the 1 for 5 to help with some of this that we're talking about now. So now that's where I'm at. So I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you wanna get your HR specialist and see if she's got that completed. Like she said she was gonna have for us, now this is back when we was doing the pay plan. She said she'd have us a status form completed of why they got what and how they got and how they did everything.
Well, that's all laid out in the form.
Yes, but she...
Today's on the offer plan.
Yeah, no, no sir, I'm talking, she had a status form of how it was laid out.
Your education was when you had it.
There you go, that, that's right, and how everybody failed, where they failed. And we, and we're sitting here in July and we haven't gotten that yet. So that, that may help.
I'm gonna say this, I just don't understand...
We do have that though, we don't?
We have the pay plan, sir.
But I mean, it was submitted and accepted when all the other departments submitted their education, like raises and stuff. And the fire department submitted theirs just as well to get their extra steps that they were due.
Well, I agree we passed the education policy. I just don't understand why every time something comes up about the police department, we're trying to take care of the police department, we bring up the fire department. It's not the same, it's, it's not the same. That's just like, even the thing that came up with all the cars we bought, it's not the same. We replaced all those living quarters and stuff over at the fire department. We spent a lot of money and we take care of our fire, we really do, we take care of everybody. I just don't understand why every time something comes up, we got an issue in the police department, we're comparing it to the fire department, it is not the same.
May I do a request?
Yes.
Please, if I can give permission from y'all to hire up to Step 3, I will never ask you this.
I thought, I think it's fair.
Off the board.
If I can give permission to go up to Step 3, and then everybody will get that. If you come in non-certified, you start out as Step 1.
I don't, I don't think so, let's just leave it the way it is. That way you have to come to the council and get permission for it and you can tell us why you, you're wanting to give it. Let's just leave it, I just think we should just leave it the way it is. Because you need to explain why you're wanting to give it. I mean, that's what our job is to manage the money, we need to know why you wanna spend some extra money by bringing somebody in.
I don't have a problem with that. It's just, it just seems like every time this comes up, my department is pitted against somebody else. And that's our goal, our hornets. What they do is they put out fires and I love you for it, you know? God made policemen so y'all have somebody to look up to.
Sheriff, we're gonna stable dish, bring it back at that, we got a doctor here.
Amen.
I don't think anybody's pitted against, it just, it was an opportunity to bring it up because I've, I've emailed every, you know, I've tried to get it.
Now, every time something comes up on this agenda about the police, the fire department comes up every, so every...
You know, they're back on their own track, yeah. But I think it's first responders or should be...
And married.
Taken care of.
They are, but, but how are they not taken care of? We, we take care of, I'm, I'm, I'm talking, as...
We got a lot of competition.
We don't have a lot of, oh much, okay.
Hey Mayor, can you get with Jane and y'all work on those status forms?
I have to be taping.
Did y'all just work on those status?
Let me get back with you on this.
That's what he said, he said he was gonna take care of it.
I wanted to say something. The whole issue was that edu, with them, that education plan was removed the way it was intended about paying them. That's where you need to start.
But Jane, you're the one that implemented, yes you are, yes, 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 yes.
You voted for it, everything was...
And you, you're the one that wrote it, but you've been making the biggest, you've been having the biggest complaints with it.
Take some accountability for yourselves.
Why don't you take some accountability for all the things you've missed?
Respect their...
All these problems that, I know, I'm talking, I'm talking, everybody has had a couple, now I'm talking. Every problem we've had the last year has been because of you Jane, has been because of you. Because you wanna have control of every single thing. If you would just do the things we asked you to do, we wouldn't have all, all the problems that we have.
You're not consistent with your policies.
You're, you're not consistent in being HR, you're too busy being everything else. If you would just do HR, Laura, I'm still talking.
I know, but this is broken, you're almost Tiffany.
Well, Laura, how many rules have you broken? You seem to break one in every single bit.
Well, let's not make it personal, we're here to do a job for the people we represent, this is not representing them.
You could just show up on time and do your job, you would have had the problems that you have. So we're gonna go on to the next item.
This is absolutely irresponsible.
Chief, Chief, you have your lighting issue?
Sir?
Alright, we're gonna go to...
Every lighting issue?
Yeah, it's, it has become very embarrassing. And I got a checklist, we can go out.
This can't do. Okay? Somebody saying somebody needs to be arrested, I can't do it. Council President has ordered it. This is her house right now, they're meeting.
Okay, you have this additional issue that's come up, that's a new issue?
Yes sir, and, um, and you have the address of there, I'm just gonna say the 600 block of West Park Street is requesting street lighting. There's four houses right there, it's really, really dark, they want, they need an LED light. As you can see, I've invited you all the information on that budget, it is severely in the hole.
And this is, and this is because others are charging against the budget without your knowledge. So you didn't know that you were going to be, that it was going to be over budget.
Yes sir.
Why are you not being contacted before? You should be, that out of respect, you should be contacted.
When utilities board, when there's damage for a storm or something like that and it's a traffic light, it's two, two separate claims.
Right.
The police department pays for every street light in this city, every one. So when they work on them, they change the level or whatever, they send that invoice to administration and finance. Administration and finance automatically go ahead, pay. The only reason I know if the money's coming out is when I do a budget check like I do every week or when a street light request comes up. Not everyone, not every street light request is granted, you know? Uh, because it does cost the taxpayers money. I mean, that's not just gonna, when you go to Home Depot and pay $50, put one on the wall, I got to. So that being said, the survey came back that it is warranted. I knew it was in the hole, I was trying to come before you and here we go.
But we still have to come up with a better plan because we can't plan for this. Even when we do our next budget, we can't plan for this because we don't know how much money is gonna be spent out of it.
That's correct.
There is gonna have to be...
Take the last three years and use that for a guideline?
And I did, and when I requested 100 grand, it's passed for this, this one. And even if I had a gap at 100 grand, I still want to be 6,000 left in and we got what, a few more months ago?
Yeah, and that's what I was just asking you. So again, as I was, as I was saying, if I can finish talking and not be interrupted. Thanks, as I was saying. So we still need to come up with a better plan on how these invoices are paid out. You need to know what's going on so that way you can keep track of this budget line and to make sure that nothing is being paid out of it that's not supposed to be paid out of it.
Yes.
And also too, so how can we come up with a plan so that when we do do the budget, we know how to, we know how much money to put in here? Because we don't wanna end up like we are now, because even if you put 6 more thousand dollars in it, you don't know what else has gotta be paid out of it.
That's correct.
So is there anything, so is there a dollar amount on the recurring things that has to be paid out of this? Is there a set dollar amount on, say, the streetlights for a whole year? Do we know how much that's gonna be or it can just fluctuate?
It just fluctuates.
You don't know what kind of natural disasters are gonna happen, I mean, that's hard to predict.
But there still should be some sort of dollar amount that we can have and then we can budget over that. There still has to be some sort of, um, consistency, like an annual, um, like an annual average or something.
And I request that, I request that community to lead the board, um, for the streetlights and for repairs that they know, known repairs.
And, and that's what I'm talking about, some things we can budget for, that's what I'm asking. So that, there should be an annual average and there should also be a repair that, a repair, um, amount that we get budgeted for. So you may wanna just get with them just to make sure that they get you that annual average so that can be a dollar amount. The dollar amount on, hey, these lights have to be repaid, re, um, repaired annually and some of them may not have to be repaired until every three years. So you can still come up with a budget and then you can come up with an amount to budget over so you're not going in the hole.
Yes ma'am.
Does that make sense?
It does, and I will get on that first thing in the morning.
Alright, and also too, make sure you're in on the, in the loop on when these invoices are sent in before they're, um, being paid out. Let's do that. If that makes sense, everybody.
If it's work that needs to be done, you should...
Yeah, he's gotta know about it coming up.
Okay.
What about this street light?
So...
We need to put...
You said what, Lee?
We need to transfer something from the general fund to cover if it's reasonable and necessary.
And this is gonna be a, so, and you're talking about putting up a new light, right?
Yeah, the poles are already there, they just need a light.
Alright, so... And how much is it gonna cost? So we're gonna have to not only pay for the light to be there, we're also gonna have to put some money in the budget for the, to cover the cost of it.
11 hundred dollars a year.
Alright. And what's the total amount you're asking for?
11 oh 6.
So that's the, that's the cost to get the light put in place and to get us through the rest of the year?
That was the last cost.
Well, 11 oh 6 plus 48, 8375 to come out even.
Yeah, and that's just gonna make it a zero dollar balance though, right? So we still gonna have to put some more in there because we're still gonna incur some more costs because how many months we...
September, two months.
Yeah.
You'll just have to come back, he'll have to come back before us every time they send something, that can become redundant.
And the aggregate?
Yeah, that's not fair.
We just move 1 oh 6 plus the 48, 8375 and then anything else that I have.
Yes sir.
Alright.
Which is fine, that's what y'all gonna do, I mean, I'm fine with, I thought we put a little more, so we did have to come back, but that's fine.
I, I don't think it's fair you have to come back every time for that.
Can we just get that budget line from the PD and give it to the street department? Is that street, street?
No, we're not.
I don't understand why it's under your hold anyways, it's not...
Because that's how it's always been maintained, we don't need to change it. And also too, you are gonna have to come back to the council to request a budget amendment. That's how we treated everybody else and we need to, um, we need to, um, remain consistent.
Yes ma'am, I was joking.
But we're, we're going to need an ad item to be amended and I can be, we'll approve that.
Alright, so Shannon?
Mike is gonna discuss this.
No, we got an ad item. Alright, so that's that, you'll take care of that for us?
48, 8375 plus the 11 oh 6.
Alright, it was how much?
Um, the total, I don't know, and we're gonna pull that out of general fund?
Yeah, 43, 85, 48, 8375, I think that's, that's 11 oh 6 even?
Yes sir.
And guys too, I do wanna say, this is another reason, um, that I'm thankful that we've been able to do all the things we do as far as planning and investing and making sure we're not admitting this budget every meeting so that we can take care of emergencies and things like this. So this is one of the reasons, while we've done a lot of things that we do as far as the finances. So when things like this come up, we, we're able to take care of it.
That's right.
You got it? And Shannon, so the next one is Mike.
Yes.
Alright, Mike, you're on for discussion of waterproofing City Hall quote from Summit Waterproofing, it's here in our files. All right, Mike, you're on for discussion of waterproofing City Hall quote from Summit Waterproofing. It's here in our files.
I was just, I'm just saying because Shannon asked me if you had any questions you want me to answer.
Well, I got a couple of questions. So, um, I see you said this is a, um, how often is something like this, something like this has to be done?
The last time we done it was about thirteen years ago.
And that's usually the time?
It was ten years ago.
All right, so my next question, I know we did something like this at the, um, at the library too. So is this something that needs to fall up under you for all the buildings, or is just everybody responsible for their own building?
No, they're responsible. I mean, we've done it, we, we ended up putting it in, we did the library roof, we did it in the museum, and we done it at the IDB before you sold IDB to them.
So let me...
The company's been really good, they're providing, even Trish that was here, she said she's been working here for thirty-five years, that's her kind of building that they were leaving.
Okay, so let me ask you this, and this is another question that's gonna concern the budget. Is there a list of the last time we've done these for each building, so that way we can kind of plan when that year's coming up, just in case? So you, you just need it when you need it?
You need it when you need it. Roughly, it's running every ten years, because they're giving you a ten-year warranty.
Um, I was just trying to see if there's something we need to...
They took councils away, they might decide not to do it.
You're right, but it would still be nice to have a plan, even when another council comes in, they can still have something they can pick up and have all this information, so they can just move forward. But I guess in a perfect world...
I can hear a meeting, it hadn't been that perfect.
Mike, does this need to be subject to bid due to the amount, or is it something?
I think they changed that to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, this is not some, this is very specialized, these people do. This building's seventy-five thousand per feet, it's not like a normal repair or that kind of work. These people do like high-rise buildings, but that's their specialty.
Could this be considered capital project?
I believe that whenever Alex was here, how much, how much money is it for this?
I think they put like a hundred thousand into waterproofing.
So we have somebody set that to do this? Okay. All right.
Wasn't there something else we had talked about waterproofing, Mike? Or in my, in my dreaming, I, I knew you had talked about this. But wasn't there something else we was going waterproof?
The museum, wasn't it?
No, we did that.
Already did that?
Yeah.
And I think we've got the stagger down with police department waterproofing.
Besides that, boy. Is that...
I, I think that's it.
Okay, then. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. I think it makes it a double.
All right, thanks, Mike. You got anything else?
Thank you, Mike.
All right, next on the agenda, um, Faraz Da Bunny requesting zero five zero dash retail beer off premises only, and zero seven zero dash retail table wine off premises only for Texaco Grocery located at eight oh four West Fourth Street, West Fort William Street, and the Chevron Grocery located at one zero zero one North Broadway Avenue. First time, no action needed.
Good morning, please.
Hey, how are you tonight?
How are you? Good.
So, you can go ahead and, um, tell us about it. We have, um, in our package, you're requesting, um, I guess you're requesting some licenses for these two locations?
Yes, it's been like a one zero zero one, the Chevron, a nonprofit, and eight oh four on Fort William. We bought that two stores, and it's a running gas station with the beer and wine, and they're trying to transfer the licenses.
Um...
So we can get our own license.
And Gene, you, you've already looked at this too?
Gene, you're good with good.
Okay, all right, I don't have any questions.
I'm good, it looks good to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is to set dates for, um, budget work session discussions. I know I talked to Shannon about this, and I also sent an email out. Um, so we need to come up with some dates that we're gonna have the, um, budget work session. So, Mayor, I don't know if you have the dates, when you're gonna have everything ready so we can start?
Oh, okay, have it ready by the first September, we all can have the whole month to look at it, and have it passed by the first meeting in October, or we won't have to carry it over. So wait, start in July, because my department heads give me July and August.
So when are you holding, when are you, um, want to gather the first meeting? Because we can't have a budget, and we can't discuss a budget without a work session. So we have that, we have...
We have the whole month of, uh, September.
So you're saying just we, we just need to come up with a...
You know, you can make up your own budget. I mean, if you look over the budget, I'll have it ready by, hopefully by the first September.
We need to fix a Saturday in September.
I don't think this, I don't think this what he's saying.
Yeah, he's gonna give it to us, right, at, by the, in the August.
I've got eight departments that I can go through.
And you're gonna give it to us the first September, then we gonna set a date?
Yeah, I hope to give it to you by the first meeting in September.
All right, so let's go ahead and set a date, because we can't have a budget work session without the mayor and the finance department.
I agree.
All right, so look at your calendars, so we can go ahead.
September the sixth, that's the first Saturday.
That's a Saturday weekend.
Oh, yeah.
And it doesn't, and I know Shannon said she didn't want to do it on a Saturday, and I'm okay with that, but if it's done during the week, it will have to be after, um, we get our work.
I, I can't do during the week, because I've got athletic trips I'm driving.
It can't be on Thursday or Friday.
Right, so it needs to be, we, we've done it the past, on the weekends the past two years.
Work for us, weekends is fine.
Yeah, the thirteenth is good with me.
All right, I mean, that's why we're here, to come up with a date, so we can go ahead and get it on the calendar and schedule it.
Thirteenth, sign with me.
September thirteenth, twenty fifth, twenty fifth.
I can't, the twentieth is my child's birthday.
You can't do what day?
The twentieth is my seven-year-old's birthday.
All right, so it's looking like, um, the thirteenth. Mayor, you good on the thirteenth?
I think I've got a lot to do, though, but we gotta finish it before they get to September.
So is there any way you can get it to us, Mayor, um, in August? Is there any way we can get the budget any sooner than the first of September?
I hope they have it, wait by the first September.
I'm saying, is there any way we can get it sooner, because that means...
I don't know. It all depends on what we've got to go through. We've got to evaluate what we've been over the thread. Last three years, we gotta set ten percent aside, and we gotta go through all the departments, and see the necessities, and I've got the, uh, my department heads, they've been very good, about being very, um, conservative with their budget year from year to year. Going into the next budget, every one of them's been very qualitative.
Okay, so if you're saying that earliest you can get it to us is the first of September, the only thing is, if everybody, the first day that everybody can get together is on the thirteenth, then that means it's gonna be crunch time, and that means we may have to have more meetings. So either, either we're gonna try to get it before September first, or we're just gonna set September thirteenth, but everybody's gonna have to give up some more time to get this budget done, and that, it's just gonna be...
I'm interested in doing it.
I'll get it through as soon as I can.
Okay, so we'll, um...
We've had these budgets run into the next year.
All right.
That's why I always like to start in July, give it a good, must hit start.
All right, so...
I'm gonna be out of town, but obviously if there's four y'all, y'all...
You're gonna be out of town on the thirteenth?
I told y'all this.
No, everybody needs to be here for the budget work session. That's the most important meeting there is, and everybody needs to be present.
When are you going out of town, Ashton?
Twelve, thirty-four.
Uh, the council meeting on the...
Is anybody going anywhere for Labor Day on the sixth? Everybody gonna be on time on the sixth?
I'll be in town.
All right, let's do the sixth.
Well, if he gets it to us on the first, then we can do it on the sixth.
All right, so the sixth, so Shannon, looks like we're thinking the sixth at nine AM.
And look, if we have to run into October because they can't produce it on time, that we run into October, and we still meet on a Saturday in October?
All right, let's, let's start with the sixth at nine AM, and we're not gonna go past four o'clock.
And we're just gonna meet with department heads?
Just the departments, and then on the sixth, we'll schedule, um, the entities, but we have a... We'll schedule the entities, um, on a date. It's gonna have to be during the...
Include the reg and the library, right?
And the museum.
And the music.
Well, and then we'll schedule the, uh, appropriations, like before work session, or...
Notice it's already gone out for all appropriations, well, there's the turn there, the question. I want to thank the libraries, it's always the first, they on time. They're great.
All right, so we got it, the sixth at nine AM?
Yep.
I want to make sure we get that out to the public, the person. Everybody. Shannon, you got that?
Yep.
All right. So then we want to go ahead, well, I guess we should go ahead too, on that meeting on the, um... Our meeting gonna be on the Thursday. So on the sixteenth, do we want to go ahead and add, um... Start at four PM, we're gonna start at four PM, start with the entities on the sixteenth? That's good. Y'all good with that?
Sure.
All right, so do you want to add, start at four, do you want to start at three? I mean, because we can always push the work session longer.
Sixteenth?
It's the sixteenth. So we'll start at four?
I need to start at four, give me time, get off the bus.
Yeah, I know, but again...
So we'll start at four with the entities on the sixteenth? And then that next week, if we don't get through with the departments, we can schedule something, try to schedule something that next week, the seventh, will be eleven, or not the seventh, or the eighth will be eleven. You leaving on the twelfth action?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right, so everybody got that down?
Yep.
Okay?
When are, um, purchase orders going to close, so y'all can get everything you get and bring your order?
First week of September.
And also too, Shannon, we want to make sure that those purchase orders, they have to be for things that are budgeted. Like, there's no such thing as leftover money. You can't just decide you want to buy something because you didn't buy something that was budgeted. It has to be for things, yeah, things are budgeted, not dollar amount, not money, not dollar amounts.
Yeah, I have another question about that.
Yeah.
On the, uh, accounts payable, ponder is eighty-three thousand dollars, and I know that's because of that issue we had. Why is insurance not paying that? Why aren't we paying that?
Reimbursing.
So we're go, how, how long does it take for them to reimburse us back? Because we're finna be out eighty-three thousand dollars and...
They're usually pretty quick. It's a quick turnaround. They send me a proof of loss form that has to be signed by us. Check usually gets here within one to two weeks, usually after that proof of loss is signed.
Okay, all right, but they're, they're gonna pay us back, we're just going on and paying the bill.
Right, but only for what they are, um, taking responsibility of. They said only to, they only pay for access to those pipes. They don't actually pay for the pipes. They got, is the way it could explain the thing.
Okay, well, here's...
The adjuster.
Okay, I understand that. But why would insurance not go on and write the check in? Why would they not go on and pay it and just cut us out of it altogether, so we wouldn't have to pay it at all?
Sure, that's just how they're...
Could you find that out for me and just let me know? I'm just curious, mine wants to know.
That's how they've been doing all, with all the claims. We send them an estimate and everything, and then they reimburse us, and we pay them for it.
I got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Another, another item on the, on the budget, I mean, on the accounts payable, there's a, an item payable to Crescendo for phone services. Have we gotten the contract reviewed yet, or the paperwork reviewed yet? We still don't know what we're doing with Crescendo.
It is a two-page contract, that's all it is.
Has the city attorney reviewed the contract?
Did the mayor give it to you?
We asked about that twice.
I just don't feel comfortable paying this.
Because I got a bunch of people calling me since the last majoring about the phone's not working now.
They're still not working.
They're not working. I'm getting calls.
Yeah, but Shannon... And Shannon also asked for you to come up with some, um, some alternatives, so were you able to do that?
I have one alternative for phones, and it's for Rona, that is the phone service that we used to use. Uh, and that, the utility board has just gone to them, and, uh, we're gonna get across with them.
The city attorney needs to look at that contract to determine if there are any ways to get out of it, if that's the appropriate step. Uh, and, and we need to do that quickly before we have them to turn us off or not pay bills that, that the systems are not working.
Yeah, I just don't feel right wasting the taxpayers' money for something, we're paying for something we're not getting. You know, I mean, we're paying for services we're not receiving.
If, I'd just like for somebody to come down here from Crescendo and tell us why they're not working. I'd just like to know why. We're, we're paying money and we're not getting services.
The, the systems that were purchased without council approval were purchased, not capable of doing what we're trying to make them do.
Yeah, I voted against it, because I researched it after it did come before us, and it's not for us.
But let me ask you though, so are you talking about going through the utility board, or just using the same people that the utility board?
It's just using the same people they...
So did you try to go through the utility board?
They don't...
Yes, and they have changed to go with poor runner, and that's who they're using now.
So, so what, what does that timeline look like for you to be getting a price from them?
I should have one next week.
Okay, all right.
But they, you've already asked, they just, you're waiting on the...
Yeah.
So we sh, we're sure we give it the red scope of work based on what we used to have?
Yes.
Oh, I have another question, and it just come to my brain. I know, we're having a, a public hearing for a road closure over, that's for y'all, because you're gonna open that up soon, whatever. As then, I don't know if everybody knows this, but there's a wooden bridge here that, that gets to y'all, corrects, that you go over?
It's not wooden, no.
Okay, it's a bridge. I thought it was wooden from the road. Here's the thing, I have no problem giving y'all the road, what y'all want to do, that, that's not the issue. The issue is, is the street department still gonna take care of the bridge, or do we need to go ahead and remove that bridge off of their list? I'm gonna say go ahead and remove it off of their list. Yes, Mike, I knew you'd have something.
It was removed ten to thirty years ago.
So it's not on the list?
Not even on our...
No, it's not on the list.
I'm good. Yeah, I mean, I was fine with the road anyway, I just wondered about the bridge and the street department, if they'll keep water flow.
It, I, it's been...
Let's go.
Yeah, and Ben's the attorney representing them, did you have something, Ben?
No, we're talking about two roads, so, we're, we're talking about two roads, so, um...
Is that why you're here for the road?
Yeah, I'm here for the road.
Hey, so...
I thought you was coming to see me.
Well, I'm always, I'm always willing to see you, hey. I, I've appreciated the banter, uh, that, uh, we're talking about two roads, Merkel Avenue, so Merkel in nineteen fifty, so nineteen forty-six, it was plaid, the great Merkel. Nineteen fifty-four, a portion of Merkel was vacant. We're talking about vacating the remaining portion, and that is a plaid, that is a survey that, I, I can give you a survey that has a markup, it's probably easier to read, uh, this is a smaller picture of that. But, uh, in nineteen fifty-four, or nineteen fifty-six, uh, there's a D for the lessons that own that property, D, a portion to work to the city for a road. And, um, I know, I gave this to the, uh, planning zoning board, but it's just a quick little note, see? That's my handwriting to show you. We're making this portion of Merkel, you can see right there, that's the road that's being vacant.
I'm, I'm good. I was just worried about the bridge, and Mike corrected me on the bridge, so I, I don't have any...
Well, and even was, the moment that y'all vacated, it's fully their responsibility, even, even if they still maintain it. So they'll take over all responsibilities for the road, and we've got a facility easement that, uh, will be signed prior to the agents of vote presence. So, y'all have any questions?
I have any?
I know.
All right.
All right, Mayor, I have a question for you. I know since Reed, oh, that's, I'm sorry, Ben, I think that's it.
Oh, you're fine. Oh, we'll move on to the next one. Okay, well, do y'all take a vote, or what y'all do?
It's on the agenda for...
What kind of public hearings, I think?
Oh, oh, this was the public hearing.
No, we had to start the council meeting.
We got two minutes.
Two minutes, two minutes.
Okay, okay.
One minute.
Okay.
Mayor, I got something for you. I know Reed, um, he retired, and he was terrible with something. It's on, on four hundred fourth street, um, right off of North Main. And, um, I guess I need to give this to you. Um, it used to be, um, I think they called it a service street or whatever, but they ended up closing it. But it does go into, um, some private property, but the street is still responsible for the, the city is still responsible for repair of the street. And I need to see if we can get some concrete laid, um, laid right here, like goes up into a driveway, it's still city property.
Well, if we look at it, I have cutting information on it right now. Give me the address, we'll look at it.
All right, okay, and also too, I wanted to ask you too, I know you and I had talked, because I know Wood Street is on the list to be paved, and you told me that we would be able to do that little, um, extension over, like, or Peach Street, just wanted to make sure we were still...
But I can tell you now, it looks like the way we are coming in on the budget on our favorite project, so we will be able to add some to it.
No, mm-mm.
You don't know for sure, but if you give me these addresses of these areas...
No, not, uh, not that, that's, that's not it. We were, I, I was already told that Woods, Wood is on the list, Wood is getting paid. But you told me that we would be able to get that little part of Peach too.
I don't know, I have to get with engineers to find out, and also, if you're here, if you know if that was on the list, to add to it.
It was, it was, and so was Bolton and Sarah Lynn.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everything is still on track with Reed, Donald. Huh?
Oh, it's in the sand and all of that.
And Bolton and Sarah Lynn were on alternate list.
But we were told that they are...
I can't be, was, was told prior, I did, well, my list says, I can give them out.
Yeah, I think we need to get them out, because we just want to make sure the plans didn't change since Reed left. Yeah.
If it, it looks like we don't have enough money to do it. Now, the Sarah Lynn, that's gonna take a lot of concrete work, a lot of red leveling, a lot of...
It's bad.
Uh, drainage work, and I don't know if money will be there.
Yeah, I don't remember Sarah Lynn, I don't remember Wood and Bolton. Yeah, I don't remember Saraleen. I don't remember Wood and Bolton. Was it Bolton?
Saraleen is the road that comes onto Bolton. I mean, it's crumbled. There, it's, oh, it's not safe for the older people who walk anymore at this point. They can't go that way anymore.
I know it, but I'm saying, I don't remember that. That wasn't one that was added to the list though.
Yeah, it was. It was on the, it and Bolton were both added to it, to the alternate list.
But you said I'm good with Wood, um, Cromer?
The way it looks right now, we will be under budget and we'll have enough to do with. I mean, I'm not saying anything that it is gonna get paid, but because I can't, I can't make that call until the final numbers come in.
I really hope so, because I was told it was gonna be paid, and it's gonna be some upset people and an upset council member if it's not.
And same with Bolton and Saraleen. It's, it's a hazard.
We need to get Shannon time to do that.
We don't have time.
Why?
We gotta, uh, we gotta go to public hearing.
We can do both afterwards, like we have-
And then we also gotta change the accounts payable. This is the student crescendo.
I agree, we need to do that.
We can start the public hearing, Shannon, then you go.
Six oh one.
Just do that.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at six oh two. Your roll call vote, Laura, Horley Heath, Lee Perriman, Nate Brewer, Ashton Pollard. Implication was given by Councilman Brewer. Now we're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. Justified by the United States of America and true republic which expands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Mayor, why don't you have a report for us?
I just have one thing, Madam President, I'd like to, uh, read it in a minute. Letter of recognition, City of Silicon Valley Mayor, Council, wish to recognize and congratulate Catherine McHear for reaching the title of first runner-up in the Miss New York Agit on Sunday the twelfth of this month, twenty twenty-five. Catherine is the granddaughter of Jesse Lee and Priscilla Adams Cleveland, who were recognized in twenty twenty-one for a highly beneficial act, actions throughout our city, had to make Silicon Valley an award-winning city. Catherine, your outstanding accomplishments reflects not only your grace, intelligence, and dedication, but also the strength of character and spirit that made our community proud. Representing Silicon Valley on such a prominent stage is a tremendous honor, and you have done so with great, with grace and poise. You are inspiring to young women throughout our city and beyond, showing what is possible through hard work, confidence, and commitment to excellence. Your success brings great recognition to our hometown, and we could not be more thrilled to celebrate you. We look forward to watching your continued success and the many more milestones you will be undoubtedly achieving in the future. With sincere congratulations and warm wishes, signed, Jim Michael, Mayor of City of Silicon Valley. Jesse, that make I don't guess. I was hoping that Jesse Cleveland would be here today, uh, tonight, but I will see that he deserves a letter of recognition. Thank you, Chris.
Hey, Mayor?
Sir?
Nate, you had something? Ozzy?
Come on. Come on. I want to add this to my presentation.
So for those of you who don't know, uh, our department is a member of the East Alabama Regional Training Association. That is a regional training consortium which stretches from our department kind of on the north border down to Pike Road, kind of down on the southern border, all the way from, um, basically the two eighty quarter all the way to West Point, is this far east as you know? Uh, in Columbus. So, um, about, so Chief Diddy LaFayette, uh, is the president. Uh, I'm the vice president of, of our association. And about a year and a half ago, uh, Chief Diddy reached out. Uh, we were trying to come up with a little, a training event or a community event that we could host through our training association. And he reached out to the FDNY nine eleven tunnels to towers mobile exhibit. Now, this is the official FDNY nine eleven memorial exhibit. Uh, there are a couple of them that travel around the country. And, uh, initially, we were just trying to see if we could get it to the state of Alabama, hosting it through our training association. Um, and as I guess luck or fate would have it, um, it was presented the opportunity for us to host it through our training association on September eleventh and the ensuing weekend of this year. Um, so it will be coming in on the tenth to the Opelika Southern Union Campus, and, uh, will be open, uh, throughout, uh, the, from the eleventh all the way through the sixteenth for, uh, both public and school kids, uh, school groups to come through. And, uh, in fact, uh, Silicon Valley City Schools is sending, uh, our eighth graders down there, uh, one of the days when it's open. And, uh, we're expecting about two thousand school kids to come through, uh, while we have it along with public access. So, uh, really cool opportunity. Uh, of course, along with that was a lot of fundraising. And, uh, of course, many of you know Mr. Steve Marlowe, uh, this kind of span Alabama Power districts between here and Opelika. And so, uh, Steve and, and Mr. Rod Carter, his counterpart that covers the Opelika area, worked together with us, uh, and we went through their grant process, and they're actually, um, had awarded a ten thousand dollar joint grant towards this, um, for the fundraising that we had to do. So we've kind of wanted to come up, share the information with y'all. Uh, we do have, uh, suppliers that'll pass around to y'all. We're just now kind of getting to the point, I know we're knocking on the doorstep, but just kind of getting to the point of blasting, blasting it everywhere, uh, and advertising it, because we wanted to make sure we had all the school kids timed, all the school times that we needed to, to get all the kids through. Uh, but we will have public, public times for people to come through, come see it. There will be tour guides there from the FDNY. We were actually at ground zero on nine eleven, uh, walking everybody through this exhibit. So it's gonna be a, a really cool, cool thing. First time I've ever been in the state of Alabama. So re- really neat opportunity, and, uh, like I said, we just wanted to share that and make a big deal out of, uh, out of Alabama Power. Their, their part they played with us, so.
Thank you.
I'll just say something very clear. Uh, thank you for having us on the agenda tonight. I'm very appreciative that Chief Ozzy, the Chief Diddy approached us, Alabama Power, and Alabama Power Foundation to support a program like this. Really excited our kids here in Silicon Valley will get an opportunity to see and hear firsthand accounts of what happened twenty-four years ago. And, uh, anytime we can support our first responders, uh, Alabama Power and the foundation are always excited to be able to chip in. So thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for what you do to our fire department and our police department.
Thanks, Dr. Marlowe. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Alright, that is, you have anything else, Mayor?
That's all.
Alright, I didn't motion to amend or adopt the agenda.
We must amend the agenda. We need to change the accounts payable amount to nine thirty-five, four forty, ninety-one.
What number is that?
Will you say that again, Mr. Perriman?
Yeah, what number is it?
Accounts payable is the-
Number five.
Number five. Change that number to nine three five, four four zero, ninety-one. We're moving into item. And then we have that one add item.
Is there a need? Alright.
So we will, we don't have an add item that appears on, it's six or something.
Okay, alright. So I need a motion to amend the agenda. Those, Lee? Ashton second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next on the agenda, approved minutes of the regular council meeting held on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, approved minutes of the regular council meeting held on July first, twenty twenty-five. Any motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, approved minutes of the regular work session held on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Heard Ashton first. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes.
We're questioning, did we approve the minutes for the May twenty-second meeting? It were-
I don't think- They're not, Ben.
So we need to at least have it for the next meeting, so we can put it on.
That's right.
Okay.
Alright, old business public hearing to consider request of pro- programmable, programmable logic consultant LLC to close a portion of Merkel Avenue located wally within the property ten eleven O Burnham Highway. A utility easement will be granted to the Silicon Valley Utilities Board ordinance twenty-two eighty-five dash twenty-five.
So you have to open for-
I know, and that's hard to say.
But we also should have had people sign it. You should be signing sheet.
Alright.
Okay, so anybody who's here-
We're talking about the end.
Alright, so yeah, everybody that's here, make sure you sign in on that sign-in sheet, because we are having a public hearing. So now I'm gonna open up the, um, I have a motion to open up the floor for the public hearing.
I'll give you a motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, any nays? Alright. So now the floor, um, is open for anybody who would like to come up and comment on the public hearing. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Alright, is there anyone who would like to come in on the public hearing? Alright, I'm gonna, um, close the public hearing. Now I need a motion to, um, to approve.
I make a motion we approve.
Alright, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Shannon, you're gonna have to correct that too, because I had to.
Okay, I'm gonna guess there is an ordinance involved in that with this public hearing. The ordinance we have to pass.
Alright, it's not writ-
Which was the intended approval of twenty-two eighty-five, twenty-five.
This is a big old new business.
Alright, so let me just review this one. I mean, all I can do is-
No, that's okay. You're fine.
You think, because I mean, I need it read.
Go support the ordinance and, 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 and make this.
Alright.
The key is that-
We had to open the floor for the comments.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're good.
Um, and there was no need to have, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Alright. So I was winging it pretty good. Alright, next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution forty-seven dash twenty twenty-five to allow Piper and Salton to invest G O twenty twenty-four dash B warrant costs funds. Any motion by council member?
Motion.
Alright, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Alright, next item, action that is necessary to approve ordinance number twenty-two eighty-five dash twenty-five to vacate portion of Merkel Avenue and an unnamed street located wall within property at ten eleven O Burnham Highway. Alright, if to consider at this meeting, I need, um, an introduction by council member.
Introduce.
Alright, please. Alright, if to take action at this meeting, I need a, um, motion by council member to suspend the rules.
I'll give a motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Alright. Motion passes. If unanimous, I need a motion, uh, by council member to approve ordinance twenty-two eighty-five dash twenty-five.
Not your motion.
Alright, heard. Nate, second?
Second.
Alright, Laura? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Next on the, um, agenda, action that is necessary to approve a budget amendment of twenty-five hundred dollars from Span Nutter G L zero one zero dash five four zero dash four two five two eight dash zero 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 to office and operating supplies G L zero one zero dash five four zero dash four two zero zero one dash zero zero zero. Any motion by council member? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve pay increase for Officer Jason Jonathan Mann from PDC step four to PDC step five to prevent pay compression when new certified officers are hired. Any motion by council member?
Motion.
I thought this was two.
Is that chief, is it two to three or four to five? Or three to, is it three to four or four to five?
Four. This right here?
Yeah.
Is, uh-
Four to five? Because I think the new people are the ones coming in at three.
It's four to five.
Four to five sends the email. He's fine.
Yeah, alright. Okay, have a motion by council member?
Motion.
I heard Nate, second?
Second.
Laura, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve quote from Summit waterproofing, um, incorporated to clean and waterproof all bricks and redo the windows facing Broadway Avenue in the amount of seventy-three thousand, and this funding is to come from Capital. Just want to make sure we put that. Any motion by a council member?
Motion.
I heard Nate, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, action that is necessary to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-five accounts payable in the amount of nine hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred four dollars and ninety-one cent, excluding the Crescendo Business Solutions. And this, um, new amount has been updated. The nine hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred four dollars and ninety-one cent.
I make a motion we approve the new amount.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next on the agenda, this is, um, this add item, action that is necessary to rescind resolution thirty-three dash twenty twenty-five and replace it with resolution forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five to establish election officials and compensation for the twenty twenty-five municipal election.
And we need to see that resolution, because I don't think that they're passing.
It's in the folder for signatures.
Uh, but everybody-
We have to remove, to put them off the list and replace them.
Right.
We got an email. Well, I guess everybody got, I got an email about it.
So it's just, it's replacing two people?
Yes.
Not changing any compensation?
Who are the new people?
They don't change any of the page, just two names off the list and replace them.
The, uh, none of these. Hand me the other message.
Alright, anybody else want to see this? I had a, y'all had an email, but I guess everybody else didn't get it. Y'all good?
I make a motion we approve the resolution.
Alright, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any nays? Motion passes. Yeah, and I got something else too. Um, Megan, I forgot to, um, ask her about this in the, um, work session agenda. She said that, um, Shannon, there was something with a, a vent license or something that she was supposed to get taken care of, and she was supposed to be added to the agenda to discuss the-
Okay, what was it on?
Um, Megan, tell her what it was so that-
Big nades we're having at the park. I've been to the city hall and to fill out the paperwork.
And she was told that she was gonna be, and she said she was told that she was gonna be on the work session agenda. Who told you?
I spoke with you, and you told me you'll put me down for the fifteenth.
Okay, yep. What exactly are gonna be good?
We just having a, a, my big meet. We had one last year, and I was going to head to head-
Yeah, it's just a lot of big meet, but they're raising donations for, they're, um, yeah, for them.
So do they need to do this, or are they good?
No, they're good.
So we're telling her that she's fine?
Yeah, she's fine.
Alright. Yeah, the one, um, add item.
Okay, uh, budget amendment from the general fund, PDC's light. Yeah, and Luann's putting it on the papers. Give it right back.
Um, we voted on that. I, I read it.
Okay. Alright. So we have an item that's a proposed budget.
Yeah, four and five.
If I do, I have the eleven oh six, three, three, or whatever.
Correct.
We don't have that yet, so. Pause for a second.
I mean, I guess we can go ahead and, um-
You want to read it?
Pretty much.
Read it in? Okay.
Mayor, I have a question for you. When is our audit for FY twenty-four supposed to be presented?
Uh, which can, I have my ready answer for you to break down.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll go ahead. Since, well, we're waiting on her to get that add item ready. Um, we'll go ahead and let anyone who wants to address the council come up. So, um, now time for anyone to address the council. No action will be taken at this meeting. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record prior to addressing the council. Hey, how you doing?
I'm alright, alright.
Good.
How are you doing this evening?
Good, so just say your name and your-
Chiquita King. I reside at eight ninety-five Camden Avenue. Um, coming tonight, uh, again about the road pavings. Uh, now they did come out and paved right there in front of our resident, the roses. But it's still an issue on West Park. It's like they have a bunch of, just, where they paved some road, and they just put a pile of rubble, and they got cones there off of West Park.
I know where you're talking about. That's actually my district, yeah.
Oh, is that true?
Yes, they're trying to get that, Kenny Cromer can answer that, but they're working on that. They're trying to make sure that that portion's level where it's kind of gone down some. And so it's, it's gonna take time. It's not a quick fix.
Yeah, because I know that they paved South Oak Avenue.
Right.
Right off of West Park, so I was just wondering why the cones were there.
So, other instructions, when you add good to paper now.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, also, um, the road at Lake Howard, they are terrible.
Let's be careful of you. Laura got that on the list, if we got, put on the way, we could take care of that road as well. We'll announce that later. We're having to get some figures up right now.
Okay, all right. And another item, has the city been spraying for insects?
We had to quit that some time ago, because of, it was killing more than just mosquitoes, and people were complaining health-wise.
Okay.
Producing a lot of meat and other things, yeah.
There's, there's also multiple municipalities that the driver of those vehicles that spray those were receiving or getting cancer. There's multiple lawsuits on that, and so those bus trucks, there are things to pass.
So they're not gonna find another alternative to try to.
Only thing we do is keep stagnant water dumped out, and let's put a little bit of oil, I guess, something, but any stagnant water you find, be dumped out.
They do have tablets that they distribute, um, from time to time around, like the ditches and stuff that will help with the mosquito control.
Okay, well, that's all I had tonight. So you said that they are working on the road paving some of West Park and Lake Howard.
Some instructions, Lake Howard, we got a way of paving that road. Getting figures together now. We should, uh, Michael Rice, engineer, we should have those bigger problems in the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If everybody signed in before you leave, please, for this, uh, public hearing. You can decide as soon as you leave. Oliver, how you doing?
Doing great, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
You gotta read it, Mr. Luann.
Is there anyone else?
Uh, you got a number?
You got one.
Uh, my name is Cheryl Johnson, everybody tonight, Spring Street, took more out. Uh, my question is, uh, why do some people at Silicon Valley have to have a business license or something?
We have somebody, and, and if you got somebody you wanna.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it's not my job, it's, it's the city's job to do that.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
But I'm just saying.
What she said? She said, why do some people have to have a business license and some of them don't?
Everybody has business licenses.
It depends on. Yeah, but it depends on. It depends on the event too, they're having.
I'm saying a business license, like, to, to my.
Oh, well, everybody should have a business license, and we.
Everybody should.
Well, if you know somebody who doesn't, then let us know, and they will be addressed. But this is the thing, and I will tell you this, this is one of the things people got pissed off with Alex about, like, they really cracked down on people having business licenses, like, that was a big thing in here. And Tony's been doing a really, really good job too. So it's a lot of people that used to didn't have one, and they are being made to have one now, and if you're caught, you will be fined. So some people may just still be flying under the radar, but, um, they're doing a really, really good job at checking into this.
I'm asking for myself, because I want to know, because when I first opened my business, I went in to open two weeks, and they came to my, I went in to open two weeks. So, I'm, I'm only, I was only open two weeks, but you got people that's been opening for one, two years.
Somebody probably, and to be honest, I hate to say this here, somebody probably called you. They probably reported you, but just like the, the people that you're talking about, if they get a tip, they're gonna check it, and they are gonna go out, but I hate to say it, some people do fly under the radar, I mean, but they do have to have one. Like, they're not, nobody's giving them a break. And if somebody has some information on somebody operating without a business license, they can call in a, an anonymous tip, or slip a letter on the door, like, somebody will go out.
You can tell the, the fire's office tonight, and they'll, they'll check into it tomorrow.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking. It's just not I don't report anybody, because I'm just saying, these people operate, these several people operate in Silicon Valley, and I know, a lot of people know that they're operating, and so many people on the city know they're operating.
So how do you, how do you know that they don't have one? Did you call, did you check with them? Just, but you know them?
I know.
Well, business license is required, and there is active enforcement, but we don't know about it.
They can fix it if they don't know about it. Do you want me to send you, I'll text you the business license clerk, uh, email address?
My, my thing is, this is what I'm saying. Some people at the city house know that some of these people don't have a license. It's not my job to go and.
If you let me know who they are, I'll take care.
It's not my job.
She don't wanna.
She always does.
That's what I'm saying, it's not my job to go and tell somebody else, but some of the people at city house, and I feel weird.
This is.
I'll check the report.
That's required.
Which, which number is the ad item?
Uh.
Oh, hold on, my bad. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Because once we, uh, come on, Mr. Rust, because once we do this last one, we'll go back.
Josh is coming here.
Yeah, I did, um, I did too. Um, he didn't give me a heads up to tell me that he wasn't using us.
Josh, hey. You know, Red, on, uh, on number 50 Peach Street, you know, we've been talking about it a lot. Um, I've been looking at that for five years, you know, people dumping spears on it, and they came and cleaned up around that old camber, it's been there, the tags, it's 2008, you know, you know the place?
Yeah.
Well, all the trash, vinyl siding, so it dumped in the front, it was gone, and those tires were gone, you know, the grass that's grown up. Well, I looked over the hill, they dumped all the vinyl down the hill, and they rolled all those tires over my property.
Oh, no.
Down there, and they're on my property now. I mean, some of them, some of them still on there. But you know, I had to go in there, spray those tires, I went over, just to kill the mosquitoes in it, you know, I, I got rid of tires for five years in that place.
I know you don't.
I had to have ID replace it, but up down that hill. And I want to sue them or something, if y'all don't do something about it.
Did Josh ever, did Josh ever call you back? Because I hadn't talked to him either.
No, I haven't, I left a message, I sent a video of it, you know, showing him, hey, here's the tires down the hill, here's the stuff. That's not cleaning it up, that's just dumping it, you know?
Yeah, and they shouldn't have done that, so the thing, Josh don't, let's call Josh tomorrow.
That's a health department issue, you know, I mean, now the mosquitoes are not breeding there, they're just breeding down the hill, and there's water, you know, that sits down there, so I need him to get out there and get those, get those tires up, come do something.
Is Josh on vacation, chief? Because I know I reached out to him. I'm asking, I'm asking.
Right behind you, Rust.
He's having a sick day. Where is this at?
It's over on Peach Street.
Number 50 Peach Street.
And Josh's been out there already, so we, we got him to clean it up.
The trailer burned down. I don't know, a year ago, or maybe, but, and they just left all the trailer, and buildings, and stuff, uh, and people started dumping, oh, oh, we can get away with it. See, I've got almost 168 of them, you know, and he's, is, uh, I'm just starting to find it.
What's your name?
I'm Rusty, I'm, I'm actually lying, yeah, yeah.
Does he, does he have your phone number, or are you?
Yeah, I have my phone.
You're playing down.
Okay. Yeah, he was. Because you think good about trying to do something about it.
And Josh's been out there too, but I haven't been able to get him either. Yeah, so he knows what it is, but I think the issue is, they came out and cleaned this, well, thought they cleaned it up, but what they did was just take it and push it out the way, so now they just moved the problem from one spot.
Making somebody else's problems what they've done, you know?
Yeah.
And they moved it to your property?
Yeah, they broke it down, and it goes into, uh, in my property now. And I've already pulled the tires out of there last couple of years, you know, just people dumping, uh, paint cans, just, you know, and I've got cameras there, and I get the pictures of people, and I've called somebody.
So chief, you gonna, you gonna give Josh that message for us? And then tell him to call me too, because I, I sent him a message too.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rust.
Same, Mr. Rust.
All right, going once? Going twice?
Going.
See you later, Rust. All right, so the last item on the agenda is action that is necessary to approve increasing the police department budget for street lighting utilities expense GL 010 dash 520 dash 44003 dash 000 from general fund to neighborhood street lights in the amount of $5,989.75. Any motion by council member? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. All right. Having no further business to discuss, any motion to adjourn?
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Heard Lee. All in favor?
Yay.[1796.54]